Good evening. I'd like to call to order the February ninth, twenty twenty-two regular school committee meeting at five P. M. At this time, I would entertain a motion to enter an executive session to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining with employee groups and/or ongoing litigation, discussion of personnel matters. Also, the approval of executive session meeting minutes. The school committee will reconvene the regular school committee meeting, an open session, following the executive session at six P. M. for our public budget presentation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second to enter executive session. Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Garabedian, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. DeMoss, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. We will reconvene at six P. M.
Are you good, Jason?
Yes.
Good evening. I'd like to reconvene the February 19th, 2022, regular school committee meeting at 6:03 PM. At this time, going to turn the floor over to our business manager, Mr. David Libby, for our public hearing on the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Welcome to the FY23 Tewksbury Public Schools Budget Workshop, I'm sorry, Budget Hearing. We like to start our all district decisions, and we keep this in mind as we go through the budget process, in particular, our district strategy that was developed in conjunction with the school committee and our team of administrators. And the district strategy reads that the Tewksbury Public Schools community believes that our educational program will encompass a 21st century teaching and learning approach that promotes consistent growth among our students and staff to achieve academic, social, and emotional success for all students. And further, the theory of action to help us achieve those goals, if the Tewksbury Public Schools prioritizes a growth mindset amongst stakeholders while providing quality professional development and a professional culture grounded in collaboration, then all students will experience innovative, student-centered instruction prioritizing positive outcomes. So, the school department budget basically consists of four major parts, three of which are managed by the schools, and one of which is managed and shared with the town. The three parts managed by the schools are our salary section of the budget, which is the bulk of our budget, we are in the people business in the education world, our operating accounts, our other expenses that we incur, supplies, materials, tuition, utilities, things of that nature, fall into the operating part of our budget, and a capital outlay budget, we provide money to do major projects at our school buildings to keep up with heavy duty and large expense repair work at our schools. The managed and shared costs with the town are fixed costs, things like health insurance, retirement, insurance on our buildings, and things like that, we share those costs with the town. What we'll be focusing on tonight is the sections that are managed by the school, the salary, operating, and capital outlay sections of our budget, that's generally what we speak of when we talk about the school budget. These are the challenges we faced when formulating the F fiscal 23 budget. On the left-hand side here is what we do in a typical year, and the difficulties we faced in the FY20, with formulating the FY23 budget are over here on the right. Typically, we have a traditional seven-school model followed, that's been the case in Tewksbury for quite some time. In FY23, exciting news, we have the Center Elementary School scheduled to open in January of 2023, which involves a relocation of all grade two, three, four students and associated personnel mid-year through next school year. So it's a reallocation of all resources associated with this move to create a salary and operating budget for the new school. That was first and foremost on our minds when formulating the budget this year. Normally, we use prior year's actuals to determine needs and our budget opportunities. If we're over-budget in an area, we look to supplement those areas, if we're under, we want to move some of that money into areas where it's needed. Due to COVID during school year 2021, operations were not normal, so spending trends and patterns were atypical. And also, no actuals existed for the Center Elementary School, so we're using estimates and models based on our current building sizes and staff sizes and things like that to come up with a budget for the Center Elementary School. We have a high number of one-year hires and grant-funded positions this year due to COVID, so we wanted to make sure those folks were accounted for properly within our budget, either in a grant or if they were just a one-year position, those positions would be going away at the end of this year. Typically, we have meetings with principals and department heads to discuss new initiatives and programs. The operational uncertainty of this year made it kind of impossible to plan for new initiatives and programs. We've been just trying to operate the daily operation of the district, and it's been hard to look forward into those new incentives and programs. Other areas of focus, well, in the personnel area, the new Center Elementary School. Again, making sure we have a budget for staff and those positions duly aligned with the new school when it comes online during next year. Collective bargaining. Collective bargaining is ongoing with our unions in the district, so we had to do some modeling again and projecting on costs in those areas. Also, assuring accurate accounting and tracking of COVID-related leave of absences and one-year replacements and hires. We want to make sure we have the right staff in the mix going into next year. Also, we want to make sure we're funding student services adequately to recover from COVID-related progress reduction. A year away from classes and the hybrid models. We know we're going to see lack of progress that we typically see with our students. We want to make sure we have the funding in place and for our student services to be able to get our students back to where they need to be at grade levels. In the operational area, the new Center Elementary School, again, estimates, we have to estimate effects on transportation, utilities, supplies, insurance, and maintenance with the new school coming onboard. Focus on technology would be our network and device security. Devices and technology is so vital to our daily operation now. We need to make sure they're working 24/7. So we've developed monitoring systems that will let us know at any time if something's wrong with our network or our network is being breached in any way. Also, in technology, device maintenance and replacement, we're assessing the one-to-one program that we initiated this year at the high school and see how that impacted budget-wise and educationally. Is it working? Do we want to expand it? Do we want to contract it? See how that has all worked out. Also, printing solutions in the area of technology. We're always looking to reduce paper and do whatever we do, as much as we can digitally in electronic formats to get away from the need for paper and printing. Areas of building improvements, the upkeep, general improvements of our older buildings, the buildings that we will be hanging on to, the Dewing and the Heathbrook. And now the Ryan School is approaching the age where it needs some major work as well. Also, building security. We've got vestibules created for visitors in every school now except the Dewing, which we hope to address soon this summer, hopefully. And building systems as well. We're looking at some areas of improvement in electrical and HVAC that we'll be pursuing over the next year or two. This is the COVID impact we've had. We've seen expenses that are directly related to COVID. Just to note that all these expenses were paid with grant funding that the town has received. I've updated this slide since the budget workshop we had in January with the new figures that we've seen. This spending has a direct correlation with the amount of cases we see in the district. Our custodial expenses skyrocket. Nurse overtime skyrockets when the numbers go up in the district. We're thankful that we do have grant funding available to us in the town to handle most, if not all, of the COVID impact. So overall, we're asking for a 2.34% increase, which is in line with the town manager's recommendation for the school department for FY23. 2.96% of that is in salaries, a small increase in operating. And we level funded our capital outlay budget for the total increase requested of 2.34%. If you include our fixed costs with that, our, the portion that's allocated to the school department, we're actually looking for a 1.66% increase. That's what we'll be requesting at town meeting in May at this point. The debt has, will be a decreasing debt over time. That's repayment of school debt on our, on this new school as well as the new Center Elementary School. And that's naturally set to decrease over time. So we really can't, can't take too much credit for that reduction. That's going to happen every year rolling forward. So salary represents 70% of our school budget. And this is just a breakdown of, by group, the head count and the amount of money and the percent of the salary budget that they represent. Teachers obviously make up the biggest percentage of our salary budget at 68%. The teacher name is a little bit misleading. The teacher group includes anyone who is licensed by DESI to do their role in our schools. They include more than just classroom teachers. Guidance counselors are in that number. Case managers, instructional coaches, certain student service providers, and our reading specialists are all rolled into that teacher number. Our operating budget represents 28% of the school budget. It's split up a little more evenly than the salary was. Tuition and transportation and special education services are the main areas of spending in our operating budget. The capital outlay, just 2% of the school budget, but we've been able to do some major projects over the past few years. Priority going forward, we'd like to upgrade the high school security cameras. We've done a couple of roof coating projects at the Heathbrook and the Ryan School, and we're looking at doing what we can at the Wynn. It's approaching end of life there. We may do a partial phased-in approach at the Wynn school roof. We just received a report on the high school roof that wasn't too favorable. So we're thinking of, we may need some work done here on our roof. Clear touchboards across the district are also a technology, potential capital expense. An intrusion alarm at the Ryan School is something that's in need of, need of work. This is just a sort of a list of improvements that have been made from FY23 through FY25 by school and projects that we've completed from FY19 through FY22. Notably, this summer, we did a window replacement at our Heathbrook School with, where we replaced windows in 20 classrooms with new countertops, screens, and operable windows. The Ryan roof coating project gives us a 20-year warranty on the Ryan roof. So far, it's been very successful at the Heathbrook and hoping we'll see the same result at the Ryan. And the Wynn School, we've had, did some paving and the driveway, the bus loop, lower parking lot. And we were able to seal coat our sidewalks in the upper parking lot. So we also manage 56 separate funds in the areas of grants and revolving accounts. They all have a specific purpose and must be used appropriately. They must be used for the purpose that the funds were collected for. We can't take parking fees from the high school and buy textbooks or buy items for the athletic department. So the expenses have to be in line with the purpose that the funds were raised. This is a list of grant funding available for FY22, which is the current year. We don't have the FY23 grant numbers yet, but generally, what we have in the current year is a good projection of what we'll have moving forward. We still have a balance in our ESAR grants that I mentioned earlier, we'll be using to pursue some HVAC improvements for our classroom areas in all of our buildings. This is what our budget requests will look like at town meeting in May with our fixed costs sort of broken out in the areas that we share these costs with the town, health insurance, retirement, Medicaid, unemployment insurance. You note that our building insurance increased, well, is set to increase for next year. We have been informed that insuring vacant buildings is more expensive than insuring occupied buildings. And we'll have two of those vacant buildings for half of next year in the North Street and the Trahan School. So we're expecting an insurance increase for insuring those buildings and the new center school when it comes online. So next steps in our budget process, we continue to discuss with building principals, department heads, elected officials, town officials, teachers, parents, students, and community members to refine and react to our ever-changing needs. So as needs and resources change, we'll likely make changes to our budget at the detailed level. And process will continue from now through May town meeting and produce some movement within our budget. We may move some money from operating into health insurance or any of these areas. Could see modest changes as we move forward, but we are comfortable that we can operate effectively within the total recommended town manager budget for FY23. The, there are detailed account-level versions of the salary and operating budgets on the DPS website in the business office section by location and/or department. And also, we have the budget broken into DESI functional categories. Shows you how much we're spending on maintenance, teaching salaries, any different category that is on our Department of Ed function account structure. That's it for me.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Libby.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, Mrs. Demos.
So I just wanted to clarify, Dave, that when we were talking previous about the capital outlay budget of a 0% increase, that you, we were still going to be able to look back at those building systems that had areas of focuses on, just?
Yes, we have, so we propose to study the HVAC using ESAR II grant funds and do the actual work using ESAR III grant funds.
Okay.
So we're, right now, we're in the study phase. We've had consultants out, go through the buildings. And they're in the process of getting us their recommendations for how we can improve the HVAC. And then we'll look at those projects. We will need to get those approved at the state level to make sure they meet the needs of the grant. But once they, they, we have preliminary approval that HVAC improvements is a good category to go after.
Yeah.
And once we have the official approval on the detailed project, we'd move forward with getting the work done.
Perfect. I just wanted to clarify that.
We have until September of 2024 is when ESAR III expires.
Excellent. And when you're talking the building systems, I know we were talking at the beginning about the Dewing and the vestibule. Is this building system, is the HVAC in the Dewing in particular or in other buildings as well?
We're looking at the Ryan, the Wynn, the Dewing, and the Heathbrook.
Okay.
The HV system here is pretty new still.
You're pretty, yeah. And I think that's everything I have. All my other questions have been previously answered by you, so thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Demos. Uh, Clerk, Mrs. Garabedian.
Hi, thank you, Dave. That was really helpful. My only question. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. In our, the reuse committee for the North Street and Trahan, there was a discussion regarding who would be managing or is there budgeting happening in fiscal year 2023 for the maintenance of those buildings? I can wait.
Sir, please stop moving those, sir. Sir, please stop moving those. We're going to try to get everyone in. Please stop moving them. Thank you.
Can I make a motion for a five-minute recess?
Yeah, now they're encroaching on the meeting, so.
Again, I'm going to make a motion for a five-minute recess.
I'll second that.
Got a motion in a second, Mr. Chair?
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well. We'll stand in recess for 10 minutes. I'd like to reconvene the regular school committee February 9, 2022 at 6:32 PM. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Jack Stadman to please rise and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's the final warning. We're not here to clap and cheer. That's the final warning. The final warning. The next description, unfortunately, everyone's gonna have to be removed. I do not want to have to do that, but I'm going to do that if we're gonna continue to be disruptive to this municipal meeting. Thank you. The February 9, 2022 regular school committee meeting will be televised and recorded and may be viewed live on Comcast Channel 22, Verizon Channel 34, or at youtube.tv.com. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I am asking if anyone here tonight is recording tonight's meeting or taking any audio, please identify himself or herself. One last call. No one is taking any video or audio recording of this meeting? Thank you. With no recognitions tonight, we'd like to move on to our student representative report. Mr. Jack Stadman.
Hold. Mr. Chair, can I have the floor for just a second? We did not move on past the public hearing on the budget. Should we resume the meeting at that item on the agenda?
I believe you are correct. Sure, Mr. Parsons.
Thank you.
Fred, do you have any further questions?
Um, not at this time.
Okay. Mr. Parsons?
I do.
Okay.
Just a few. Would this work? Would you like to project her up or? We'll try this. Yeah, sure. So I'm just looking for some explanation of variances and just a little more detail on some of these items on the budget. Sure. The first one I have is, could you just go into a little more detail of what, under student and staff instructional hardware and supplies, what that $400,000 would be allocated to?
Um, yes. The, for next year, we're looking at additional clear touchboards at Ryan, Wynn, and High School, as well as some staff devices for here at the high school.
And do you have a ballpark figure on how much it would cost for these staff devices at the high school?
The staff devices in total?
Yes.
We're estimating about $100,000 of the 400.
And then of the remaining 300 about, that would be going toward clear boards.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. My next question, too, I am looking under the Wynn Middle School, the Appendix B Advisor Budget. I see that that has dropped by $23,351 from the $40,000 allocated in fiscal year 22. I don't see an explanation of variances, so I was wondering if you could provide one on that? It's a 58% reduction from that item?
I'll have to get back to you with that, Nick.
Okay.
I'm not sure why that is off the top of my head. I think it might have been a, we were calling something Appendix B stipends, and it might have moved into professional development, possibly, but I'll, I'll, I'll look it up and get back to you.
Okay. Mr. Malone or Mrs. Regan, could you add any clarification on that possibly? Okay. And then my last question regarding the budget. Give me one second to find it. Um, and again, I'm just looking for an explanation of the variance here. I don't see one. So for instructional coaches in fiscal year 22 is budgeted $439,779. And for the proposed budget for fiscal year 23, that amount has increased by $98,029, which is a 22.29% increase. I'm just looking for an explanation of the variances there.
So during FY22, the FY22 budget process, we were planning on, one of our positions was a, was a reading specialist at the Doing School, which was grant-funded. We sort of re-purposed that position into instructional leader of our reading program. And our Title I allocation decreased significantly, so that position was sort of moved into a budget line. And I believe it's, there's a somewhat of an offset in the Doing Specialist Teaching area to, that that person was, the job was repurposed and therefore the money was put in a different account. Was allocated towards that individual.
Okay. And beyond the literacy coaches, what other kind of coaching do we have in town?
We have instructional coaches in the areas of math and technology.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons, and good pickup. I don't have any questions, David. Thank you for your report. So I guess we will officially close the budget hearing at 6:39 PM. And at this time, we will reconvene our regularly scheduled school committee meeting at 6:39 PM. With Mr. Jack Stadman, you have the floor, sir.
As always, thank you for having me back. Recently, the TMHS Drama Club performed their newest production of Forbidden Broadway last weekend. Cast and crew members worked diligently over the past few months to bring that great production onto the stage. They really hoped you enjoyed it. In addition, the recent auditions for Mamma Mia took place. The theater company hopes to bring that to you within the coming months. The student council is holding their weekly meetings on Thursday mornings. Elections will be held within the coming months to replace or reelect all the representatives in their current positions, which includes my spot itself. If you are interested, please see Ms. Glass for more details. The morning update is still broadcasting every morning. You can tune into YouTube for the latest in-school updates. The International Club recently finished their blanket drive as well as their shoe drive. The blankets will be sent out to mothers in need shortly. The shoes will be going to Soles for Soles, which is a worldwide shoe drive to help limit the amount of shoe waste around the world. The TMHS DECA team recently had their state competition tests this week. They're anxiously awaiting the results, and I wish them the best of luck in Boston. And just to take a moment to thank Mr. Malone before he retires, I understand this is the last meeting, and I want to give a personal thank you for all, all you've done during my time in school. And thank you, that's, that's all I have for today.
Good. Mr. Stadman. No presentations tonight. That brings us to Citizens Forum. To any citizen who wishes to speak to under your agenda item this evening, if so, please state your name and address for the record, and please identify the specific agenda item you wish to speak to.
Hi, my name is Nicole Saad, and I would like to speak about the contract for the teachers.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Mrs. Saad, is it?
Hi, my name is Dr. Nicole Saad, and I would like to speak about the contract for teachers.
Okay, the contract is not a specific agenda item. We're not here to talk about the contract. In fact, if people were paying attention, that's correct.
We're not on the executive session.
That's, sir, you're not, sir, enough, enough. You are not, the contract is not on the agenda this evening.
I'm going to.
We will not be discussing the contract.
Speak about teaching in Tuxbury.
Speak. Let her speak.
Need to let her speak.
Let her speak.
The Supreme Court.
If you continue, if you continue, we're going to have everyone removed. It is not on the agenda. We're not here to speak about the contract. We have negotiations currently underway through mediation, as you've been informed at the last meeting. We're not here, we are here, once again, to perform our function as representatives that were hired.
May I speak about the budget, then?
What's that?
May I speak about the budget, then?
Sure. Go right ahead. You may comment about the budget item, for sure. You have three minutes, Mrs. Saad.
So as my time here as a teacher in Tuxbury, I started the AP Chemistry Program. I received three awards from students for my teaching efforts, and I have purchased thousands of dollars of pizza from Papagino's, offering AP student study sessions on evenings or weekends, and was a gainfully employee of Tuxbury School District for over 10 years. I have prepared and paid for students to take regional-level chemistry exams and had to qualify for National Chemistry Olympiad exams. I've written hundreds of letters of recommendation, including over 15 this year, when I was no longer employed by the district. I have emailed students from a hospital bed, maybe not my best decision, but I let them know that they will still be having a test when I return, and I have loved and cared for students here in Tuxbury every day for over a decade. I also know I'm not particularly unique or special in what I do. You still have many amazing teachers who do this every day, and while I did feel very appreciated by my students, I have never felt particularly appreciated or recognized by administration, and this played a part in my decision to leave. Several years ago, I was told verbally by an administrator that what I do was in fact not special, and I was not particularly important, and somebody could easily replace me. Granted, this person is no longer employed by the district. I do feel as though it's representative of the culture here, and there's, when there is a battle every couple of years for a fair contract to work into the budget, when respected colleagues tell you how they've been belittled or reprimanded, when over 80% of the union votes no confidence.
Mrs. Saad, I'm gonna stop you right there. Nothing you mentioned was specific to the budget, as was presented this evening. Nothing. I'm not looking to get engaged in semantics here. You're here, we are not here for your political agenda or your personal agenda.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak up for a second?
Excuse me, Mrs. Saad, no, Mrs. Saad is the only.
It's Dr.
Only recognized speaker.
This explains a lot of why I left.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say that, first of all, on the agenda for the executive session, Section B, one, is discussed.
Mr. Begoyne, you are not on the school committee. You are not. The five members engage in executive session, not you.
And also, it's unconstitutional by Spalding v. Natick.
Spalding v. Natick.
Could you explain what that? Mr. Corner, no, Mr. Begoyne, no, you cannot. Sir, Mr. Parsons, with all due respect, the chair runs the meeting. You are not recognized as a speaker to address, you have not identified anything specific on tonight's agenda.
Where is that a requirement?
My name is Deb Wall. I live at 50 Sheffield Road. I believe that the policies and procedures of the school committee has a section in it on public speaking. In that section, it says that we are able to speak on anything that is in the purview of the school committee. Are you in fact telling me that you are not going to follow that policy that's in your own?
What I'm telling you is that same policy acknowledges that chair has to recognize any speaker, and for anyone to speak, it must be part of the night's agenda.
Or within.
It's not or, that, no, it is not.
That's not true. That's not true. Read your manual.
I've read the, I have read the manual several times, Mrs. Wall.
I follow it.
I do follow it, sir. Thank you.
You are not following it at the moment. We are allowed to speak on anything that is in the purview of the school committee.
You are allowed to speak when recognized by the chair about a specific agenda item.
But that's not how.
No one is here to speak about a specific agenda item this evening, and that was made abundantly clear by the last speaker.
So I'll speak on the budget.
Hold. Could we put to a vote on the committee whether to allow people to talk, please?
Just let, just, you can't fight this. Just let them speak. I'm making a motion to let our residents and guests at our meeting speak. Can I get a second for that motion, or no?
You start, you want.
I'm on the side of our students who are put into auditoriums because we can't negotiate a contract.
Mr. Parsons, we're all on the side of students. We're all on the side of students, Mr. Parsons.
So I would, I would like some clarification. First of all, through Mr. Chair, we need to have it be quiet. The heckling, the yelling is not okay. So we, we have business to get done, there's so much to talk about. I want to handle what you're talking about here. For clarification, are you asking that we allow every person in here to speak if they'd like to?
We can't restrict people speaking to anything, you can't deny people to speak on anything outside of our purview, regardless if it's an agenda item or not.
To expand on the conversation, just so I better understand.
With all due respect, we certainly can, and it's right on the policy that Ms. Wall is quoting, that personal attacks that were just made against the outgoing superintendent and others about union votes that were taken place that have nothing to do with the discussion tonight, that is not allowed.
Which personal attacks are you referring to? I didn't hear personal attacks.
You didn't hear a personal attack?
I heard a teacher talking about her experience here. That sounds like a objective criticism, which is within our purview, which we need to allow. That's not my thoughts, that is a court ruling.
And I just want better, and I would like better clarification. In our agenda tonight, it does indicate citizens are asked to limit comments related to the items on the agenda to three minutes or ten minutes if spokesperson is representing a group or concern. So items on the agenda is on our agenda. So I just want to open that up for conversation amongst us before we just take a vote. I just want to understand all this better.
That's fair. I spoke my piece.
Mrs. DeMoss?
Well, I'm a very, I'm, to me, we should be upholding what we uphold at every meeting, with the citizens coming in and speaking to the agenda, as a group for ten minutes or as an individual for three minutes. I do think that what we're looking at here may not necessarily be on the agenda. I would never want to limit anyone for having their conversations be heard in a respectful manner, but I'm telling you, I'm not feeling a whole lot of respect right now. So I think we all need to just sort of, kind of put it in perspective that it's not a personal conversation that we're having, we're having factual conversations on the agenda items here and the budget presented and topics that we're having. I feel like we have a lot to get through tonight, and in my take, it would be if it's pertaining to the agenda items that we're covering tonight, we should be upholding the three minutes per person or the ten minutes per group, and they would have to address what group it was for.
One more thing.
Do I hear a second?
So if there's something to be discussed that's pertaining to the budget, I mean to our agenda, is that where we're at?
I don't know, Nick made the motion.
I'm not at there. I think whatever we put in our budget around regulations for who can and cannot speak is going to be superseded by, what's the case's name? Natick and?
Spalding v. Natick.
Okay, yeah. I just don't want us to get sued because we're stifling people for speaking to things under our.
No one's stifling anyone, as long as we're gonna have the conversation, we're supposed to be engaging in respectful dialogue with stakeholders.
Then, you as a chair have the authority to define what respectful is.
Mr. Parsons, nothing about what has transpired tonight has been respectful, in my opinion, to us.
It's not about your opinion.
To the people sitting here, yes, it is, because.
Then define respectful.
You now want.
You need to define respectful, then.
How about the union saying, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna bring, we know, we know you're not gonna negotiate in a public meeting, we heard you say that, we want to come and hold our signs, and we want to speak, is there gonna be a problem? Maybe we could have a room big enough. That's what I'm talking about with respectful dialogue, Mr. Parsons. We've not, no one in this, no one up here, tonight has been shown one ounce of respect every time we have tried to have communication, ask a person to stop rearranging the floor, we're getting yelled at, we're getting heckled, we're getting, that's not respectful dialogue. There's a process that we're undertaking with ninety-eight percent, well, probably, I don't know, thirty percent, because most of the people came from out of town, from what I heard.
Is conjecture.
Okay. What the people, there's a process for that. And this meeting is not the appropriate place to come and air out those particular grievances.
Then what is?
In my opinion. The negotiating table, the room, the relationships that you build. The monthly meetings that we have with the joint, that stuff, Mr. Parsons, that's where you build that stuff. You don't come here and try to hijack a meeting from professionals and from people.
Who do we represent here, them or them?
No, we represent the thirty thousand residents, Mr. Parsons.
That's me.
Every Tuxbury taxpayer. That's good, there's maybe a hundred of you in the room, at best. There's thirty thousand residents in the town of Tuxbury, thirty thousand, thirty thousand. And I'm unhappy setting the precedent that all someone has to do is come in and be angry enough and be disruptive enough that they're gonna be able to hijack a municipal meeting. I guess I have a problem with that.
So the, so when.
No, no, I'm not talking to you, ma'am.
Yeah, but I am. Kick me out, then, Keith, kick me out, because you let the masked people.
I'm also with my comments. I'm kicking you out, Mrs. Wall.
You let the masked people talk for an hour and a half. You let them speak for an hour and a half, and it was not on the agenda.
Mrs. Wall.
So what is the difference between that meeting and this meeting?
Mrs. Wall, because, because of that latitude that was given to certain people, people took advantage of that and continue to show up, and yes, tonight, I'm drawing the line in the, in the sand, saying.
Hypocrite.
We're not having it anymore. No, I'm not, no, I'm not.
You were allowed people to do it, and then you changed the rules.
I always want to hear from residents, I always want to hear, Mrs. Wall.
That is classic for Tuxbury District. One way for some people, a different way for another people. If the masked people could speak for an hour and a half when there was no mask on the agenda, then every single person in this room should be able to talk.
So, Mr. Chair, I would like to clarify for our next meeting, because I'm not an expert on this decision. So I would like clarification for our next meeting with regard to Citizens Forum and our school policy, you know, the district policy, if we could clarify and finalize and have some of these answers for future use. I don't have them for right now.
Sure.
But you have the ability to second the motion to allow us to talk.
I do, but I'm looking at two different, I'm looking at the policy, and I'm looking at what my agenda says. My agenda does say that, it is listed on the agenda.
You don't have access to a policy manual here?
We have two conflicting policies that I brought up earlier.
We do have it, we do have it. Actually, Ms. Wall, I'm supposed to be speaking through the chair, so through the chair, Mr. Chairman, I would like that clarified for the next meeting.
Sure.
So take a five-minute recess and go clarify.
Once again, there's this misconception that people are here to engage in the business that we were represented.
I'm not engaging, I'm just speaking out loud.
We were represented to do the work, Mrs. Wall, with all due respect.
Then you should respect people, the taxpayers who probably have to speak.
That's all we're trying to do today. That's all we're trying to do.
No, you're trying to be a hypocrite and restrict free speech.
No, I disagree with you. I disagree with you, and I believe your three minutes is well up, thank you.
I'm sure it is. But let me say, it's not done. My three minutes may be up, but my fight for free speech in here is not done.
Peter Malloy, Three Village View, Chelmsford, Mass.
What's your name, I'm sorry, sir?
Peter Malloy.
Yep.
M.O.L.L.O.Y.
Thank you.
I believe what I have here is representative of the budget, agenda item as it references the budget, and I don't think the budget can be completed solely without at least concepts of the contract, of a teacher contract, and that's what I'm here to talk about, and I do believe that applies to the budget.
Sure.
One of the two most respectful proposals a municipal employer can offer their employees by way of bargaining is fair and equitable compensation that aligns with the value of the work that the employees do and aligns with the market in which they do that work. The Tuxbury School Committee Bargaining Team has proposed a 2.25% wage increase, which applies to the budget potentially, for teachers for each of the next three years. Not only doesn't this offer fail to compensate for inflation and cost of living increases, but is also considerably lower than the raises of the assistant superintendent, part of the budget, and superintendent, who negotiated those themselves. Further, the offer doesn't acknowledge the, at times, overwhelming amount of work Tuxbury teachers took on during the last two pandemic years. On average, Tuxbury's neighboring towns of Wilmington, Andover, and Billerica pay their teachers ten thousand dollars more a year than Tuxbury pays their teachers. Teachers in Wilmington, Andover, and Billerica make eleven percent more than their Tuxbury counterparts. If we accept the school committee bargaining team proposal of a 2.25% budget, 2.25% wage increase, which could be reflected in next year's budget, this situation only gets exponentially worse for us. The second most respectful proposal a municipal employer can offer their employees by way of bargaining is time within the workday to complete their work. Currently, I believe it would be as part of the budget, school committee has proposal to take away sixty minutes of preparation time a week from our K-4 colleagues and replace it with sixty minutes per week of lunch duty. Rhetorical question here, what evidence in the last two years has led anyone across from me to the conclusion that you should even consider squeezing more time out of the daily schedules of Tuxbury's elementary teachers? It's important to note that this sixty minutes of lost prep time equates to a three percent increase in direct responsibility for our educators. And yet, the offer reflected in the budget only is 2.25%. My grandfather was a math teacher for many years and an avid union member in Lowell, and his phrase rings true here, that doesn't even make nonsense. I want to close by saying a few, a few things, oh, two things. Few, if any, educators would see the district bargaining team proposal as respectful, a word bandied about just recently, and more specifically, I'd like to close by telling my K-4 colleagues, both myself and my high school colleagues, have your back.
Dear members of school committee, my name is Danielle.
Name and address for the record, please.
Danielle Milner, 72 Villa Roma Drive, Tuxbury, Massachusetts.
Yep. And what agenda item are you here to speak about this evening?
The budget.
Ms. Milner, no, I'm not going down that road, we're done.
You don't get to decide.
Why are you using that? I am a town resident, I am here to voice my concern, and I'm gonna do it right now. My name is Danielle Milner. I live at 72 Villa Roma Drive, formerly of 85 Martha Drive in Tuxbury, and the mother of two children, both who have gone through the Dewing and the North Street. Now they are at the Wynn and the Ryan, respectively. I'm speaking tonight to you to ask you to support these teachers and their staff. Our educators have worked so hard during this pandemic, they, they just deserve more. They shouldn't have to focus on this, they should have to focus on what our children need and what they should be teaching, not, not this, this is ridiculous. This is so simple, I don't understand, they're really not asking for a whole lot. The folks in here, the Tuxbury teachers, deserve fairness. Our kids deserve fairness across the board, and this contract dispute folded into your budget, thank you.
Robert Hamley, I have a son in, in the North Street, this ought to go well. First off, I'm pleased to hear that DESI is allowing mask mandate to expire February 28th, I'm not gonna get stuck on that. I don't know exactly what changed, but I do know that there was never about the children's safety or health. My best guess, it had something to do with the money, the ESER funds that were contingent on the town of Tuxbury requiring the children to mask up at school, pull tests, social distance, et cetera. If this school, well, I'm not gonna get into that, this question is somewhat rhetorical, but because I know that I will never get a straight answer on it. The dishonesty and lack of transparency from this school system over the past two years has truly been astonishing, like last summer when they, when we were lulled into a sense of security only to have the rug pulled out from under us at the 25th hour, so close to the beginning of the school year that it was impossible to make contingency plans. It's for this reason that I am currently making plans to pull my son out of Tuxbury Public Schools potentially in the fall. Another subject that is shrouded in dishonesty is this business of social-emotional learning, which was created by the Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning, or CASL. I read through the American Psychological Association paper on CASL, and I encourage others to do the same. It is incredibly nebulous and vague overall, but is very focused on this idea of equity. The words equity and equitable show up a total of thirty-two times in this twelve-page document. Many people hear the word equity and they immediately think of equality, but those are two very different things. Equality means each individual or group of people is given the same resources or opportunities. Equity recognizes that each person has different circumstances and allocates the exact resources and opportunities needed to reach an equal outcome. One can't help but be reminded of the slogan popularized by the father of socialism, Karl Marx, "From each according to his ability, to each according to his needs." It seems that public schools are obsessed with this idea of equal outcomes for the sake of them being equal. Whether everyone is achieving high marks or stacking up at the bottom makes no difference whatsoever, as long as the end result is equal across all races, genders, gender identities, and religions. It's a lot easier to stack people up at the bottom than it is to lift all boats. Children are falling behind in almost every academic subject, and meanwhile, we are wasting time, money, and effort hammering them with this type of Marxist BS. Instead of affinity groups, maybe we should have reading groups. Instead of implicit bias training, how about on-the-job training? Instead of social-emotional learning, how about we just focus on learning? And most importantly, instead of judging and categorizing our students based on immutable, superficial characteristics of which they have no control over, how about we judge, judge them on the level of their effort and their ability to achieve as individuals?
Please wrap it up, Mr. Hamley, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amanda Raden, 80 Pinnacle Street, Tuxbury. As you can see, I am a TTA member, but I am also a resident of this town, and most importantly, I am a mother of three. Two of my children are in the Tuxbury Public School System, and we've been fortunate to have great experiences, thanks to many of the people behind me. I have a question in regards to the curriculum budget. The district has chosen to move away from the Go Math program and towards the direction of the UBD math curriculum. So I'm wondering, now that the district is not paying a publisher for a program along with student consumables and online support, but rather utilizing our math coaches to develop the resources, how much money are we saving the district per grade level, per year, and where is that money now being allocated to?
That's a specific question that's appropriate for Mr. Malone or Mrs. Regan. I don't have that information, that's why we don't speak to things that aren't specific to the agenda.
I'm sorry, I thought the curriculum budget was. That's my only question.
Please reach out tomorrow, and if they don't get back to you, please reach out to me, and I make sure they will. Thank you.
Ms. Emily Niles, 40 Coburn Ave, Drakett. First off, I'd like to address Mr. Chairman's comment about equity at the last school committee meeting, when you said that your one ask was for elementary teachers to do lunch and recess duty in order to make things equitable between us and other grade levels. So let's talk equity. At the last mediation, you started off by proposing three lunch and recess duties a week for elementary teachers. That's equitable to the teachers who do one lunch duty a week or one lunch duty every seven days? Taking away more of our prep time is equitable to the grades who already have thirty-plus more minutes than us, that's equitable? Older grade levels don't have to do morning or afternoon duties, and we have two to four morning duties a week with kids in our room every morning starting at 8:30, and five hours. and five afternoon duties a week. Is that equity? Once again, please know you are always welcome to come live the day in a life as an elementary teacher. With that, my colleagues.
Hello, Jennifer Price, first grade teacher at Heathbrook School, 13 Winslow Farm, Hudson, New Hampshire. Mr. Parsons, I would like to personally invite you to come and spend the day with me or any of my first grade colleagues for the day to see what the life is like for a first grade teacher and how much we need our prep time, because we are drowning. We are drowning. So please, would you come and join me for a day?
Yeah, I'm free tomorrow or Friday.
Come on in.
Hi, I'm Teresa Enos, 1350 Andover Street, Tuxbury. And Bridget, how are you?
Hi.
How are the girls? Well, I'd like to personally invite you as well to come join any one of my colleagues, any of the second grade teachers, to again, please come spend a day in the life of second grade and just see how hard we work. As you can see by my voice or hear my voice, we're beat, we're beaten down, and we really are thin and don't have much more to give. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Rosemary Coughlin, 35 Hillside Road, Tuxbury. I'm offering that any of you are welcome to come. I'd like to talk about my day today briefly. I started at 7:15 at a PLC for kindergarten math. I'm a speech and language pathologist. I sat there while my colleagues, my wonderful kindergarten colleagues, planned their math lessons for the week. I sat there for one hour. When I left there, I went back to my room. It was like the deli department, because today's Wednesday, and that's special ed day at the Heathbrook. And that's the day I'd like you to come, because I had meetings with a minimum of six to a maximum of 10 staff members in each of my four meetings, which needed to be done because of legal guidelines. So equity, I did not get lunch today. I did not get prepped today. There's no way I can do my job and get lunch and prep on a Wednesday or Thursday when I'm at the Tray Hall. If we start pulling kindergarten lunch duty, do I stop legal meetings and say to parents, "Excuse me for 30 minutes? I have to go do lunch." Do I say, "Excuse me, Ms. Niles, I'm sorry, she has to leave now," which is illegal for the regular ed teacher, "to go do lunch"? It doesn't make any sense. Spent meetings will not happen. So on behalf of the Tuxbury Heathbrook School, Mr. Sullivan, you especially, I would love you to join me for a Wednesday at 7:15 for PLC in Ms. Rogers' room up till 3:30 when my last meeting ends. Thank you.
I guess I'm up. Jen Barbady, 25 Hinden Way, Tuxbury. Good evening, everyone. I'm a resident of Tuxbury as well as a K-4 specialist in Tuxbury Public Schools. I teach art to the students at the Heathbrook and the North Street Schools, and I have to say, with each year that passes, I love teaching art more and more. However, I stand before you today absolutely baffled and quite upset at the current state of our negotiations surrounding a new contract. It seems that we are no closer to agreeing to contract terms than we were an entire year ago. Mediation is literally costing taxpayers thousands of dollars. Since one of the items being negotiated is elementary lunch duty, then I must ask, where is the mock lunch duty schedule? And what might that look like? In all fairness, perhaps many of you are not aware of what an elementary day at school is actually like. So I invite you, school committee members, to come spend a day with me or any other specialist. When you visit, and I hope you do, you will see that we work hard, and there never seems to be enough time to get everything done in a day. You will likely notice that we do not sit down very often or have enough time to eat a five-minute lunch, or even go to the bathroom once, because there's always so much to do. In fact, some days I've had to make the choice to either eat or use the restroom, but not both, because I simply do not have time. If you come, and I hope you do, you will witness that our schedules are packed. Specialists have all the responsibilities of general ed teachers. We have PLC, CPT, morning and afternoon bus duties, extra help, professional development, licensure requirements, and so much more. We prepare standards-based lessons and materials for hundreds of students in two different schools every day. Again, I ask, what might that lunch duty schedule look like? Please, school committee members, listen to the Tuxbury teaching staff when they explain to you what a teaching day is like in our elementary school. Please, come and visit. Spend some time with us. Come and witness the wonderful work we do and how we spend our days. You will realize that asking us to add lunch duty does not make sense, nor does it contribute to the benefit of our students. Please, negotiating members, let's settle the lunch duty item discussion once and for all so that we can move on to the important business of educating our students. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lauren Carlino. I live at 3 Julia Lane. I have been an educator in Tuxbury for 23 years, and I've watched many parts of our school district sadly decline. I am here today to be the voice of my current students as well as those from the past who still hold a special place in my heart. I am here today to talk about students that are missing their ancillary services. The TTA has asked the district to hire staff strictly for testing students who are being considered for an IEP. This would allow special ed teachers to be available to service students on IEPs and not cancel services in order to administer and evaluate hours of testing per student, which is illegal. Your response was that this doesn't happen. And I'm here to tell you today that it does. I have been collecting data, and so far this year, the students in my class with IEPs have lost a total of eight hours and 45 minutes of their services due to special ed teachers having to either test or attend IEP meetings. I am pleading with the administration and the school committee to listen to your teachers. We are in these classrooms every day, and we have so many years of knowledge. Yet you do not listen when we speak. Your teachers are tired, we're stressed, we're frustrated, and we feel so underappreciated. Our students deserve better, and so do these teachers. What is the administration and school committee willing to do in order to solve these major concerns?
Unless anyone's gonna add anything new, we need to wrap this up. Go ahead, Mrs. Malone.
I'm new. I haven't spoken yet. Hi, my name is Emily Noel, 97 Talent Road, Pelham, New Hampshire. We've had a few people reach out and comment to the TTA about why we would move to work-to-rule in such dramatic fashion. What is our holdup? What is the purpose of taking this drastic step? What do we want? What are we asking for? While the TTA has and will continue to explain our contractual language and practical reasons why we're negotiating and why negotiations have stalled a bit, we also have much simpler answer to the question of what do we want? We want to be able to teach your children. Something I always found interesting about the staff in this district is that so many of them actually grew up here in town. Plenty of Tuxbury public school teachers and staff grew up here, and they were willing to return and dedicate their careers to the schools and children of Tuxbury. As someone who personally never felt a connection to my own hometown, my state, yes, live free or die, but not my town, I myself ended up working in Tuxbury on a complete fluke. I was looking for subbing positions outside of college. Mentioned it to a few friends. They live in Tuxbury. They mentioned how Tuxbury needs subs. I was in. A year later, I became a DLC aide with a fantastic team at the Wynn. A year after that, I was putting in for my first science teaching job. I have amazing, dedicated, funny, kind-hearted colleagues, and I work with an awesome group of kids. Every single day is different. They're middle schoolers. It's always fun. Good days, challenging days, everything, it's never dull. Research spanning back several decades shows that teachers make nearly 1,500 educational decisions per day for their students, per day. This is about four decisions every minute, and it greatly outweighs the CEOs of the largest companies. When you make that many decisions in a day, you clearly have a lot of things to think about. And what you really want to think about is teaching. I want to spend my time thinking about which of my students would make the best group leaders in our next activity, not worrying about taking home grading if I can't get it done during my prep block. I want to think about the best quiz design for my special education students to show off their knowledge without getting overwhelmed by the format, not worry about whether I have time to run to the bathroom as I walk down the hallway while eating my lunch on my way to lunch duty. I want to think creatively and design new real-world projects for my students so they can link and find value in what they're learning to their own lives. I don't want to worry about if I've input enough data into our latest tracking program. I want to think about working with my department to revamp a lab for the next month, to make it more inquiry-based, to make it more hands-on. I do not want to worry about whether I need to get a second job to pay for my master's program or my rent. In short, we do not want to be here. We do not want to be in work-to-rule, but we find ourselves stuck between a rock and a very hard place. We feel unheard, unlistened to. We feel undervalued. We feel that our ability to really focus on teaching is being put in true jeopardy, and so is student success. Work-to-rule is hard, but often it is the hardest things that are the most worth doing. We do not want to be here, but we are. And the hope is that soon, we can get back to doing what we're really, truly passionate about. We just want to teach.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Ring, 1 Walcott Road in Stoneham, Mass. I'm here to ask a question that I am sure many of my colleagues K-4 may have. We know that these teachers have just as many tasks to complete, such as grading, collaborating with other teachers and parents, and many other tasks that we have already brought to your attention as those of us also have in the upper grades. Speaking as a high school math teacher, I feel very equipped to do my own job, but I can never do what my K-4 colleagues do daily. Yet they are afforded at least 30 minutes fewer to accomplish these tasks as the rest of us on a daily basis. Students in grades pre-K-4 are just as important as the rest of the students in the Tuxbury Public Schools and deserve to have teachers who are given ample time to create the best possible learning environment for them. My question to you all simply, what is the direct educational benefit for students if teachers lose this valuable time to instead supervise them eating lunch and at recess?
Doreen Haley, 53 Baldwin Road. I just flew here from Bureka. This is appalling. You people are there for kids, right? These people are here for the kids. I've advocated for almost 20 years. A lot of my clients' kids aren't getting what they need because they can't do it. And then Deb Wall has to get up here and pretty much beg to speak because some of you don't like to hear what they say? They have every right to say something. This is totally ridiculous. In on your school committee policy, I've said it to you many times. It's anything in the purview of the school committee. You can't shut somebody up. You may not like what they have to say, but this is embarrassing. Our kids are going through enough with COVID and everything else. Support these teachers. It's hard enough for them to be in their jobs. I'm telling you, I flew here from Bureka because I was so mad looking at that YouTube video. You all should be ashamed, because you should know your policies. You should know what policy it is. You don't even have a school committee legislative rep. I've asked you as the chairperson several times, under your own policy, where's the school committee legislative rep? Oh, we don't have one. We don't need one. It's your policy. You people should be an example, and you can't even follow your own policies. It took how many emails back and forth about the restraint policy that was out of date? Everything so difficult. It's so upsetting to me that all these people are here. There are great people here. I sit in meetings. Some of them can't be in the meeting. They have to do something else. Some kids don't get help. A parent has to ask a question afterwards, and they can't get ahold of them. I mean, it's not fair. Figure it out. Give them all what they need. And yeah, I think Bureka does get paid more, but honestly, I don't care how much they get paid. But they deserve everything, but at least give them a support. I'm so aggravated at you guys. It's so embarrassing, because they're going through enough. I'm not even prepared to talk because I'm so aggravated at you. And how you treated Deb Wall is embarrassing. I mean, she supports this community. And no, I didn't let Mr. Malone know I was coming today like I'm supposed to let him know every time and come into a school building that I'm gonna be here because there was an issue at one of your schools, and you didn't support the teachers then either. It's bullying. You're bullying, and you're trying to shut people up, and it's unacceptable. So do your jobs like everyone elected you to do, because you at least get paid, not like Bureka.
Heck, they're getting five more minutes. They're getting five more minutes. Heck, what new material we getting?
It's not about getting new material. You need to listen to the stakeholders. You have five more minutes, according to the chair. He just whispered it to me.
Ms. Haley, no, no, I want to be in agreement.
I'm not in agreement.
You want to look at the policy. It states right in there. It can be limited to 20 minutes. We've been going on 45 now. We haven't received anything new other than people being angry about what they just saw on YouTube. So if we have anything new, if we have anything new, I'm happy to hear it, but at 7:30, we're going to close Citizens Forum and move on to our official business items.
Put it to a motion.
I will at 7:30. Please, go ahead, ma'am.
My name is Kelly Joyce. I live at 4 Memorial Drive here in Tuxbury, and I work as an aide at the DLC at the Wynn Middle School. My students are some of the highest needs in the district, and every day is certainly unique. I have worked in this role for almost 10 years, and while I love my students, we never quite know what the day will hold. As both an employee and a resident of this town, my question is, how many times do I need to pay before my students and I get what we need? I make $20,167 a year in my position, which is nowhere close to a living wage, especially in Tuxbury. On top of that, we recently hear that $75,000 of the town's money has gone to the continuation of never-ending negotiations where the only proposed district changes will negatively impact my students, my colleagues, and myself. This committee, and in fact, many of the upper administration officials in this district, have no idea what goes on in my classroom every day. And as others before me have spoken, come to the Wynn. Come to my DLC classroom. We'd love to have you. If you did know what goes on in my classroom, you would understand what a truly monumental task you're putting on the table. You would understand the sudden tightness it puts in your chest to hear that even more time will be taken from your day with no positive impact on student success in sight. time will be taken from your day with no positive impact on student success in sight. As the people tasked with making decisions for me and my students, you should take the time to come and learn what it is like to work with my students. As an aide, I'm extremely worried about the lack of progress I see in mediation and the disregard this committee has for both my students' needs as well as what I need to make sure that they see success every day. As a resident, I'm extremely worried that the hemorrhaging of taxpayer money I see to pay for this process, exactly how much more money are we expected to pay before our students can get what they need?
Hello, Karen Torres, 6 Patriot Road, Tuxbury. I'm not a Tuxbury teacher, but I am a proud Tuxbury resident. My children both went through the Tuxbury school system, and they are now thriving and successful adults, thanks to you folks. Thank you very much. And I do want to just speak to the budget, I just, please, go back to the budget, dig deep, get this done, and while you're there, dig a little deeper for the aides in your district. The aides in your district are critical to the student's success. When you're digging deep, please, dig a little deeper. They deserve a living wage, and please, consider that when you're looking at your budget. Thank you.
Excuse me, ma'am. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to close Citizens Forum. Having given notice approximately five minutes ago, we were going to finish at 7:30. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chair, I would be curious, I see that a lot of people are speaking individually, but they are here collectively as a group. I think it would be fair to offer one person to speak in behalf of them for a final time, or I see one person coming up to the microphone now. I would hate to say that we opened it up for 18 people and not for 19. I just, my heart tells me that we probably need to be a little bit more clear on our expectations for this conversation. So I'm not sure if you're speaking on behalf of yourself, or if you're speaking for the group, but I do think that I would like to hear how many people other than who is at the podium now were intending on speaking so that we know that voices were heard.
I would be speaking on behalf of myself as an individual.
Okay.
Am I permitted to speak?
Please, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Jade Scarpa, 153 Plain Road, Westford, Mass. I don't remember much from 17 years ago, but what I do remember vividly is where I sat in my freshman physics class at Tuxbury Memorial High School. I remember my seat because it was the one closest to the window that overlooked the woods and the side streets in the distance. During that long block, I'd eventually slump into a state of inertia and my eyes would fixate on the world outside that window, outside the classroom walls. And I'd daydream about the freedom that would come from one day graduating. Thankfully though, there was another seat in another classroom that year that didn't feel so claustrophobic. It was the room where Brian Disjardins began his teaching career with a group of freshmen. Throughout our English class, Mr. Disjardins talked about the characters in books like he actually knew them. He gave them voices and identities. He introduced us to the short stories that he personally loved, not just the ones that plague anthologies, but the ones that plague your heart and your dreams and remind you of your humanity. And instead of staring out the window of his classroom anticipating the world outside of it, he introduced us to the worlds within it. The bell would ring at the end of that class, and I never wanted to leave. I would think, man, I just really want to stay in English class forever. So ultimately, I did, and here I am now, a TMHS English teacher. But as a student, I never realized the behind-the-scenes work, the endless hours and stacks of coffee cups that it took for teachers to create that magic within their classroom each day. I never realized that the feedback on each page of my essay was probably written while everyone else in my teacher's home was tucked in a sleeping bed. I never witnessed the Saturday and Sunday mornings they probably spent planning lessons before having to plan their own weekend activities and schedules for their families. It never occurred to me how long the drive might have been for the teachers who headed back to the school at night to watch our drama club perform on a Friday. I never understood that the teacher who let me sit in her classroom instead of the cafeteria sacrificed her own lunchtime so that I would have someone to talk to. Their selfless acts of dedication and encouragement just kept coming, and the college letters of recommendation just seemed to materialize out of thin air. And although I didn't say it nearly enough when I was a student, I respect and appreciate every single teacher in this room tonight for creating classrooms that students want to stay in. And for the passionate, creative, and tenacious students in our district who might dream of one day becoming teachers themselves, I hope they are able to see that the value each of us place on teaching and learning is ultimately valued.
So just so I'm clear, I was looking for her to finish as a final. Are you the one that's going to speak on behalf for the final speaker of the night?
No.
Because we can't continue for every person in the room, so...
We never made a motion or voted on it.
What was meant as good intentions, I was looking to see how many people were left that wanted to speak. I didn't want people to feel unheard when they left, but I also need to be able to plan so that we can get to the rest of the meeting in a timely manner.
Proceed or not.
I'm sorry?
Proceed or not.
Make a motion to allow her to proceed.
But in terms of discussion, is that policy 20 minutes? Is that what the policy says?
It says.
Yeah, well, beyond policy, you're going to have to make motions and vote for any kind of movement since we already broke that rule.
There's a motion on the floor. We're having discussion, Mr. Pass.
Discussion regarding your motion.
I discussed.
That was my clarifying question, yes.
Are you ready to move on?
Yes, I think so.
I'd like to make a motion that this wonderful young lady be the final speaker, and then we close Citizens Forum. I'll make that in the form of an official motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Can I make a motion as a chair?
I have a motion. Yes, I can, and once again, this is our meeting, not the gallery's. I have a motion and a second to allow this young woman to be the final speaker for Citizens Forum. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, it's a three-to-one vote, the motion carries. Ma'am, you have the floor.
Jessica Ryan, 30 Bonnie Lake. I'm here to support the teachers and the aides, I'm just a resident. As a parent and a taxpayer, I'm astounded at the amount of money that the district has spent on this endeavor. From the outside looking in, it certainly appears as if the district is fighting to be right and not fighting for what is best for our children. However, tonight, I want to talk about the unintentional consequences of what this prolonged negotiation and campaign of divisiveness is going to lead. First, we have a talent shortness. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, the nation has lost over 550,000 educators since March of 2020. The number of students enrolling in education relation degrees is down over 20% according to the National Association of Colleagues for Teachers Education. It does not take a genius to realize that those numbers are going to add to a big problem. According to the National Educators Association, 90% of the members say that they feel burnt out and it's a serious problem. 86% say that they have spoken with colleagues who have contemplated leaving the profession or retiring since early since the pandemic. 80% say staff shortages have led to more obligations for those that are left, behind increasing stress and burnt out. 43% of the educators, the jobs posing are going unfulfilled. That's the problem. We have such a shortage here that these teachers are being so burnt out. My money is being spent as a taxpayer to fight them. Let's get it together, for real. Now's the time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion for a 10-minute recess.
Okay.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn at 7:38 for 10 minutes. And when we return, if anyone returns to the microphone, Citizens Forum is closed, and they proceed to disrupt the meeting, they're going to be asked to leave. All those in favor of adjourning for 10 minutes signify by stating aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Three-to-one, we will recess for 7 till 7:48, and we'll return for our approval of minutes at that time. Thank you. I'd like to reconvene the school committee at 7:52 PM at this time, as was announced. Motioned on, I have the floor, Mr. Burgoyne, this is your last warning. If you continue, if you continue to disrupt the meeting, I'm gonna have to ask the officers to ask you to leave.
Mr. Sullivan, please let me speak.
Hold, sir.
Can you put it to a motion or let him speak?
Sir, I don't need a motion, sir. We already made a motion to end Citizens Forum.
I'd like to make the motion to allow Mr. Burgoyne to speak.
Let them speak, let them speak, let them speak, let them speak.
Last one.
Let them speak, let them speak.
It's the last one.
No, it's been moved, no one has seconded.
Let them speak.
Tech people's living this way, come on.
Let them speak.
No second, the motion is failed. Seeing, no one has seconded the motion, the motion has failed. This is your last warning, Mr. Burgoyne. If you continue to disrupt the meeting, or anyone else in here this evening, we have official school committee business to get to, you're going to be asked to be removed. If you continue to go, if you continue to add on, we're gonna have the police unfortunately have to remove you.
All seconded motions.
You can't second, no one's arresting anyone, sir. We're done.
Mr. Sullivan, I please implore to let me speak.
Let them speak, let them speak.
Please remove him.
Let them speak, 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 let them speak.
Officers, officers, can you please clear the room, sir? Officers, can you please clear the room? We've had our final.
Our school, our school, our school.
People next.
You leaving? You not staying for any of these votes?
The majority, you don't even.
Nick, this is your job, this is the, this is the, you can make.
I'm not supporting this.
Nick, you can make it.
Everybody, we win. Everybody, we win. Hell yeah, Joe.
It's a violation of all right being laws, because we have to have public access to the community. And we have done nothing wrong. I'm not a teacher, now you're gonna throw me out?
Yes, sir, these two women here, had worked for the district, but the gentleman and the young lady unfortunately, I'm not sure about. Huh? What's that? Yeah, no, everyone, everyone, because of the acts of everyone, I'm asking everyone that doesn't correct. They are participants in the meeting.
Okay, that's what we just wanted to clarify.
Yep. Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
Are you presenting? Are you presenting?
No. Thank you. Take, take your time. Ronnie, can you make sure that Terry and Alexis, I mean, yeah, and, okay, thank you.
All right. Do you wanna, motion to move something out of order for Karen?
Go for it.
We're gonna reconvene.
Oh, yeah. Okay, it's my understanding, Mrs. Regan, getting back to business, we have Ms. Karen Baker O'Brien to present the program of studies, is that correct?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yes.
I think we, were you looking for a motion so we could move her up and?
Please, if it serves the committee, I'd love to, no, thank you.
I'll make a motion to move the 2022, 2023 Program of Studies from new business to item number 11 after Citizens Forum.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Aye, she have a tie as well, unanimous vote.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, actually, Ms. Baker O'Brien is pivotal in the creation of our program of studies every year, and she's here in case you have any questions. I just wanna note, you have a change memo in front of you, there have been changes and updated, updates noted in the memo that you have before you, I'm not gonna review all of those changes, but before I draw your attention to some of them, I wanna take a moment really to not only thank Karen, but the entire Tuxbury Memorial High School guidance team, the high school department heads, the high school team leaders, and the principal, John Bernard, and his assistant principals, Mr. O'Leary, Ms. Dick. This team makes a priority to update this program of studies and update the course offerings for our students every year to align with not only state standards, but student course needs and new needs for our students. Our students will use this program of studies to choose their high school courses over February vacation. Again, I'm not gonna review all of the, of the changes, but I do wanna draw your attention to pages 47 and 48, the section marked Additional Course Offerings. In response to new ideas and opportunities that come up each year, and thinking about the last two years of virtual course success for many of our students, where there is often a requirement to learn in an online blended situation later on in college, we realize the need to differentiate and constantly improve how we are providing course opportunities for students at the Tuxbury Memorial High School. So next year, we're going to seek to expand and improve our offering of edgenuity online course offerings, not only for our high school, but also our middle school, while our students may be at school or throughout the summer. We're gonna work with our students, staff, and the new administration team on how this tool can serve our many students appropriately. So we're also exploring a new partnership with Southern New Hampshire University to expand on our early college and dual enrollment course offerings, again, while our students are here at school. These opportunities may come about mid-year, so we made a point to note in the new program of studies in red, these are the edits, as these changes occur, students and families will be apprised of the changes so that they may make mid-year changes. One example that we're really proud of, if you go to page 48, is a partnership that we have with the Tuxbury Police Department through the chief, Ryan Columbus, he proposed that we look at an intro to criminal justice with a focus on policing. We know our edgenuity program offers many criminal justice-related courses. What you see new is a blend of hybrid learning with edgenuity, and then some live in-person instruction with members of the Tuxbury Police Department, targeted instruction, as I said, on the law and policing. Again, this was with collaboration of chief of police, Ryan Columbus, Brian Farnham, and many members of the police force working with us, and particularly our SROs. So we're very thankful to the, to the chief and his team, some of them who are just here, for the development of this course. There are many edits and changes in the program of studies, and Karen is here with me tonight if you should have any questions on either this new course or any of the other changes.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Regan. Mrs. Demos, any questions?
I was just wondering, when I was looking through some of these classes, the engineering, the topics in engineering, introduction to engineering and product design, I think, you know, that's an amazing opportunity for our students. I'm curious if we have staff already on board that are qualified to teach these, and it's just a new section or a new offering, or are we looking that we need to put any sort of an additional staff member?
No, in fact, when they got together to do the revisions of this book and looking at the courses, the changes in the engineering program are specific to, as we look at our Innovation Pathways program, and as we look to revamp that to be more competitive with other schools who have the pathway program, we noticed that, you know, the courses that we had, the engineering one and two, two and three really are very similar and needed to be revamped, so they wanted to call it Advanced Topics in Engineering, and that was done with collaboration with our science department, one of our teachers here who has a background in engineering, and ones, and works in our robotics club, so there was a lot of input and feedback, and with hopes he would be interested in teaching that class.
Absolutely.
And I might add, Ms. Demos, by combining engineering two and three into an advanced engineering course, and as a requirement to our innovative pathways, we now also open up the opportunity for some of our other advanced STEM coursework for students who are particularly on either a STEM or engineering pathway. So it really is a win-win for the student who's looking to participate in these types of courses.
And I can add on that also, if you look at that, it also says that it meets the graduation requirement for science. If you look at the Mass Corps requirements, that language is also in there, so we are now embedding that these engineering classes will meet a science course requirement for graduation.
So there is T, okay.
Yep.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And my last question I had was looking at this Intro to Health Careers, the Home Health Aid course was removed, is that the same offering that we had before that was like a CNA class? Is it comparable to that for students that are interested in the health field? Perfect. That was my only questions I had when looking through the program of studies. Thank you for putting this together and for all the time and effort your staff put forth to it.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Demos. Mrs. Garabedian?
I'm really excited to look through this. I, I don't know, I've always seen it online, so seeing it in the book actually for some reason just was interesting to look through. I was excited, as you pointed out, the ingenuity, was really excited about that, I'm excited to see that come through. The other question I had was, in World Language and Fine Arts, the Hispanic culture history and history of language, do those qualify as language requirement classes?
So they've changed the language in a lot of the classes, so that we highlighted them all because there's been some language change, so that's what that's from.
Okay.
They do align to the state standards for World Language, and there has been an update to those standards, and the course updates you see in that whole section really relate to those standards updates in the state.
Great, and I also had the same.
And just so you know, when, right now, the guidance staff is out in the classrooms and meeting with students, talking about course selections, how they can do it, referencing a course catalog, and then they have an individual meeting with the students in March, where they'll review their course selections, look back at their transcript to make sure they're on track to graduate, and then make sure their, their pathways, the courses are aligning with pathways. So there's a lot of work the guidance department puts together when they move the students through this process.
Okay. Yeah, there's a lot of opportunities here, I think that families would be excited to learn about, so, thank you for sharing this.
And the dual enrollment with Southern New Hampshire is a new opportunity, which is amazing, offers a lot more courses than we can currently do with our current partner, and at, at a rate of $100 per course, and that's a three-credit course, and 125 for a lab-based science, so that's amazing.
That's huge.
Which is, you know, is a Which is, you know, as a parent paying for college, if a student can get college-level courses and transcripts leaving high school at that rate, what a savings it is on the other end.
That was going to be my comment, being on the committee several years now, seeing that ever-evolving and changing and adding those. Those are wonderful opportunities for our high school kids, so thank you, it's great to see that, you know.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Speaker O'Brien.
All right, with that, thank you, Mrs. O'Brien. I'm going to turn it over to our clerk for our approval of school committee minutes.
I would like to make a motion to approve the school committee minutes from January twelfth, 2022, as written.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the January twelfth, 2022, regular school committee minutes. Everyone voting yes, please signify by stating aye.
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 She have votes aye as well, that's a three-o vote, the minutes are approved. Our submission and payments of bills, Mrs. Garabedian?
Okay. I move the school department payroll for the period ending one, 2022, to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown, for a total amount of one million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll period ending January thirtieth, 2022, in the amount of one million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Mr. Chair, that's January twentieth, sorry.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well, just for clarity, that's the payroll period ending January twentieth, 2022, in the amount of one million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I move the school department payroll for the period ending two, three, 2022, to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown, for a total amount of one million, four hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll period ending February third, 2022, in the amount of one million, four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, three hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-nine cents. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 She have votes aye as well, three-o vote, that passes. And moving on to our superintendent and staff reports this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Start out this evening with some very good news coming from our Special Education Department. We were notified by DESE that our Special Education Department under Part B of the Individual Disabilities Act, Tuxbury Public School District meets requirements, which sounds like our normal standard, but actually it's the higher standard they give out. Annually, the department is required to identify each LEA's specific needs for technical assistance or intervention in the area of special education. The department is required to assign each LEA one of four categories, meets requirements, which is the highest, which is what Tuxbury met, needs assistance, needs intervention, and needs substantial intervention. The areas that are looked at are the five-year cohort graduation rates for students with disabilities, the annual dropout rate for students with disabilities, public school monitoring, special education compliance data, problem resolution system, special education complaint data, performance of special education, state performance plan, annual performance report, and data and findings of significant disproportionality. So this is a great indication of all the hard work, particularly of all of our teachers, but particularly those in special education and our special education department led by Mr. Palatier. Certainly, that's a great reflection on, on them, and it's just a great word for our kids in this district. So we're very proud of that. On an additional note, we were notified by the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs, a couple of thank yous. One went out to high school teacher Patrick Galligan. On behalf of the veterans and staff of the Bedford VA, they'd like to express their sincere appreciation for the generous donation of puzzles for our veterans, which we received on November twenty-second. Again, thanks to Mr. Galligan and high school for that work. In addition, the Trahan, the Dewing, the Heathbrook, and the North Street Schools were all recognized for sending cards for veterans. So again, just great work by our students, by our school leaders, by our teachers, making sure our veterans are supported, and a great thank you coming from the VA. So we certainly appreciate that. Also a reminder that February seventh through eleventh is National School Counseling Week. So certainly our school psychologists, school adjustment counselors, social workers, all our great clinicians in the district do a great job every day, but it's always fantastic to look at them and congratulate them on this annual event. As an update to some of the elements going on in the district's response to COVID. Earlier today, Governor Baker and the DESE Commissioner announced that the DESE mask requirement will be lifted as of February twenty-eighth. So I'll talk a little bit more kind of on the far end of my report regarding this. It's just a quick reminder that lifting of that requirement does not apply to transportation. So on buses, students are required to have masks, and in nursing offices in the schools. That is a different regulation governing each one of those, but those two elements, regardless of what the determination is in a particular district, those are maintained. In addition, we had been monitoring the vaccination rates townwide of school-aged children, and we had also asked our staff to share their vaccination rate status in, in hopes of looking at the eighty percent cutoff rate. They are no longer accepting, as of today, because of this announcement. Obviously, they are no longer accepting those pieces. But we continue to look at that and certainly support people who are just making the determination that they want to get vaccinated. We have signed on with DESE for their updated testing program, and this allows for each student and each staff member to receive a test kit every two weeks, and each test kit is two tests. So for those who opt in for this option, students via their parents and staff will, have been receiving a test kit every other week with two, with two test kits in each box. So we've begun to implement that piece. We have over nine hundred and twenty students who have opted in for that piece, and over three hundred and twenty staff who have opted into that, and that list continues to grow, and they can opt in at any time. But thank you for DESE for supplying those test kits free of charge to the district. Those are distributed to the students and staff, and they take those, those are all take-home test kits. So we hope that coupled with our continued pool testing, for those interested, this gives really two opportunities in any given week for a staff member or student to get tested if they so desire. With that new testing program, what is no longer occurring in our schools is contact tracing and test-and-stay program. This is a significant change, particularly for our nursing staff. This was not only involving them for the proponents of their workday, but they were spending many hours on weekends and nights supporting the contact tracing. So that no longer is in existence and is replaced by the take-home test kit initiative. But we thank our nurses for their help and understanding, and they're in full support of moving to this test kit move, and we've had great feedback so far. In addition, our nurses have provided on our website, under the COVID tab, some frequently asked questions, particularly in regards to the take-home tests. There were instructions that came out, we have them on the website. It's not necessarily intuitive the first time you do it, but once you do it once or twice, it, it becomes routine. And just a quick indication of kind of where we're at, at a time and place. If you remember last month when I reported, we were in the hundreds as far as cases. Today, at 1:00 PM, we were down to nine, single-digit. So that's a two-week tracker. So that's a clear indication of where those numbers lie. We've all been through this with COVID, we know the numbers go up, the numbers go down, but certainly this is an indication of where we're at at this particular time. To circle back to the DESE lifting of the mask requirement, if you recall, many months back, the committee took a vote prior to the requirement coming into place, approximately a week or two before that requirement came in, to require masks in the district for students and staff for a sixty-day period, and at that time, at the end of that sixty days, to look at that. So we are far beyond that sixty-day element of which the committee had voted on. So unlike some other districts, we do not have a mask policy or any piece currently in place by the school committee to determine mask-wearing. We have been fairly faithfully following the DESE guidelines from day one and using that as our primary source. So with this new piece coming out today, that the requirement will be lifted on the twenty-eighth of February, it would be up to the committee to make a determination to either move forward just as is and follow, continue to follow DESE guidelines, or any other piece they want to entertain. My recommendation as superintendent is we've, we've done very well as a district following the DESE guidelines and following those DESE protocols. We've benefited from things like the pool testing, test-and-stay, contractations, contact tracing support, CIC involvement, and now the take-home test kits. So by partnering with DESE, I think that has certainly impacted our ability to combat this pandemic as a district. I see no reason why to veer off that piece at this time. And with DESE discontinuing that requirement on the February twenty-eighth, my sense is to support the direction DESE is going in. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm open to any questions or-
I guess I'd like to have some discussion with my colleagues. Obviously, this was news very early this morning, so it didn't make the agenda, but I know I've inundated with calls and texts and people that I've seen, so I just think it's important for us to at least have a conversation. So I'll start with our vice chair. Mrs. Demos, do you have any concerns, comments, or?
Just a few. I, I have no reason to go against what the Department of Ed is, is suggesting, as that's what we followed at the beginning. I do have a bit of a concern with the date that was chosen of the twenty-eighth, with us coming back from February vacation. I wish that it maybe was pushed out one more week because of student and staff traveling. So I'm hoping that our percentage of opting in for the, the testing at home is pretty high, so that, you know, we know that families that will test the students on the Sunday before they come back will know not to send the students should they test positive. But the date is the date, and it is not up for discussion. So I would say that I would endorse, you know, in what DESI did. We don't have the policy, our, as a committee, we stated that we were going to follow the protocols that by DESI and, and the state, and I think that we should continue to stay true to that. But I do have some concerns just to make sure that we're supporting those staff and students who still will choose to wear masks. So I would like to see that we still have a plethora of masks in the buildings, you know. There will be days that those students that are wearing masks need a, a change of one, or something happened, you know. I think it's important that we be supportive of all our students and staff, no matter, no matter what they choose as to either wear or not wear a mask. We are going to have people that are going to be a little bit uncomfortable, I think, with the change, and it might take some time, and it's okay. And I just want to make sure that we're cognizant of the social-emotional needs of all of our kiddos, and quite honestly, even the staff. It's going to be a big change. As principal of an elementary building at the moment, I'm not sure that I'm ready for, on the twenty-eighth, to be free of that in the middle of a lunch duty, who knows, right? But I think it's those baby steps back to pre-pandemic times, and it's, it's a good thing. And I do support the date of the twenty-eighth, making masks optional. But let's just make sure that we are supporting the students and staff by both having the available masks and by being extra cognizant of the SCL of the students and the staff as we move forward with this thing.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Demos. Mrs. Garabedian?
So I, to piggyback on what you're saying there, Shannon, I agree. And I think supporting DESI and Mr. Malone, I appreciate your recommendation. I think I'm proud of the way that our district has handled COVID, COVID response, you know, mitigating measures, you know, pivoting as needed. I think we've done a really good job, and I think this is just the next step. So I also agree, finding a way to support all staff, all students, in whatever their wishes are to be masked or unmasked. And in terms of the date, I think that gives people more of an opportunity to kind of reevaluate if maybe they want to opt into some of these programs that we have. So maybe that date isn't such a bad idea because it gives people a little lead time to get signed up for some stuff that they're maybe not signed up for now. So just moving forward.
Great, and I think no one up here will be surprised that I'm fully in support of parents and families and students being able to make those health decisions that they think are best for them. I agree with my colleagues, we should have masks. I mean, there may be a time where maybe someone doesn't necessarily wear a mask all the time, and they come into school, and maybe they're around people that, you know, they think may be sick, and they may want to benefit from that. I think that's a good option to make sure that we have available to our kids, but I, I think quite honestly, it's, it's been overdue, and I'm glad that DESI today and the governor reached out and, and made that recommendation that they did, so. All right. With that, did anyone have any questions? I know we got in a discussion before. Any questions for Mr. Malone on his final report?
Final report, no.
Mrs. Demos?
Mine's a little blur, Chris, I'm sorry. I think, I think I, I think I'm good. It was more the mask conversation that we were talking about, the transportation nurses, having them available. I think we're good.
Okay, great.
And then obviously, the only caveat, we make sure we message that out.
Right.
At the families and stakeholders.
We'll do that for certain, yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Malone. Mrs. Regan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first of my updates is the second quarter has concluded, and our first semester has concluded. Due to the inclement weather, however, student report cards were posted to the Student Aspen Portal today at noon as opposed to yesterday, because we lost that one day due to school cancellation. Parents, please check your child's Aspen account, and if you need assistance with this access, please call your child's school. The school and district report card is also in your packet. The letter that you see at the top of the packet here has been sent home to parents through email and has been published to our district website. This school and district report card is much like a report card a student gets, but shows how a district is doing in so many areas and where there may be room for growth. I'm just going to highlight two things. As you have this, have had this packet already in advance, you can see that the district is outperforming the state average in every category. The one area we clearly see, and this is not a secret, you heard this at the beginning of the school year, that we know there's area for growth, is in the category of student growth. We know there's been learning loss due to the pandemic, and we continue to make it a high priority that we are paying attention to the needs of our students, both academically and socially emotionally. Again, parents receive that letter, and the entire school and district report card can be found on DESI's website. Well, it's kindergarten registration time, and this is an exciting time of the year where we welcome our youngest of learners and their families to Tuxbury Public Schools, and that registration flyer is also in your consent agenda. Parents are encouraged to go to our district website, especially the Student and Family Support page. There's a video presentation of all of the need-to-knows and day-in-a-life of a kindergarten student at Tuxbury Public Schools. The required documentation for registration, as well as the medical requirement needs, are also on that site. This Monday started our registration process. Again, please reach out, Ms. Karen Baker O'Brien was here, her office, or Ms. Mara Rosio, who works with Central Registration at the Center School. Registration at the Center School. DESI has allowed districts the option of participating in the Grade Eight Civics MCAS Assessment Pilot. Our WIN School Administration, together with our eighth-grade civics teachers, have raised their hand to participate in that pilot. We're very happy that they've chosen to do that because this gives students a practice, if you will. There's three sections to this new MCAS. One, it's a local classroom performance task that happens in late March and April. Two, a state performance task that again happens in late March through April, and then an end-of-course computer-based test in late May and June. In this pilot, no district will be, results will be reported. It will give our teachers, as I said, that chance to practice and an ability to try this assessment. So I truly want to thank our WIN School Administration and those related staff for opting in to try this out. It's obviously the work they do in that eighth-grade civics class. It gives students an opportunity to try that performance-based project and get a feel for what it's like. It also gives our staff that practice so they know when this becomes a requirement, what that looks like and feels like for students. And then finally, in my updates, and I really wish Officer Rizer and the Tewksbury Police Department members that were here tonight were still in the room, February 15th is National School Resource Officer Appreciation Day. This is an opportunity for people to appreciate and recognize the good work our school resource officers do in our schools to keep all of our students and staff safe. So I recommend or urge every student and parent that may be watching, when you see your school resource officer at school on February 15th or any day that, that you see them, please say thank you for all the work they do for us. That concludes my updates, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
I have two questions. I'm really excited about the kindergarten registration. I think the feedback I heard last year was so good.
Yes.
I'm just hoping that this year, there's some more opportunity to get those kids and parents into the schools to see the school before.
Point taken.
So, let's, you know, I know that's all pending, but that's my first thought. The other one is, for the civic MCAS, is that optional for students, or is that just going to be assumed a part of the eighth grade?
It's going to be saturated into the actual curriculum, the teaching and learning, so they'll participate in a project, much like if you remember our eighth graders did a couple of years back with the Wadabotto Project. That would be similar to what a local performance task may be. And then the performance task will be done computer-based online, all, all students will do that. We're certainly going to receive more details as our WIN School prepares those exact dates, all of those little details. But it's my understanding all of our students will experience the practice of doing that. I'll let you know, though, I'll certainly check in with the WIN team and make sure that what I'm telling you is not a fib and that that's the plan.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, Mrs. Demos, anything?
No questions tonight.
Neither do I. And Mr. Libby, I'm sure you're, you have a very thorough report with the budget, lots of comments tonight, lots of questions, that was nice. So, anything additional to add, sir?
Nothing additional.
Great.
My report stands.
Thank you, Mr. Libby. Does anyone have any questions on this evening's consent agenda?
No questions.
No questions.
Seeing none. What is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to accept tonight's consent agenda.
I'll take a second.
I have a motion and a second to approve tonight's consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, that's a 3-0 vote. The consent agenda is approved. And going over to committee reports, our Elementary School Building Committee, Mrs. Demos?
Hi, yes. So, the Elementary School Building Committee is running very smoothly. We are hitting lots of benchmarks, and it's an exciting time to be part of the committee. We are talking about moving the center staff to new locations so that we can start that first, that next step in the process. That was one of our big discussions last week, and where the new staff will be located. So that will be something that will be shared out with the families once it is all finalized. But we are meeting tomorrow night at 6 o'clock at the town hall, and again, the project's moving along nicely.
Great. And I'm going to move on to our other committee member that's present, Mrs. Garabedian, for the wellness.
We have two upcoming meetings. One, I think is March, what do we have here, March 23rd and then May 18th?
Okay, great. And we have no policy changes, proposal or adoptions, and that's going to get us to old business. And Mrs. Regan, the Tewksbury Memorial High School Principal Search update?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm very pleased to update you on this search. As you know, we contracted with NESDAQ to lead us through this very important administrative search for our district. I want to thank our screening committee, truly a group of dedicated individuals, which included representatives from all stakeholder groups, including Ms. Demos, who represented the school committee. They dedicated many hours of their time. We even had high school students, one who was on the screening committee, but a, a handful of others who actually were the greeters for all of our applicants and walked them to their staging room and had a little chat with them as they waited for us to interview them. The screening committee screened 24 application packets and chose eight candidates to interview. We developed our own questions based on the profile that was created from the focus groups and stakeholder survey. That helped to focus the candidates on the applicants we felt best fit the needs of Tewksbury Memorial High School. We completed those preliminary interviews all day Saturday, and then again, this Monday, past Monday evening. We had a healthy deliberation period last night, and then finally had consensus on moving four candidates to a second-round interview process. The next step is that second-round interview where a district leadership team will pare down the list of four to one or two finalists. I expect that we will complete those interviews next week. The process also includes the reference checking period and time to learn more about the candidates by talking with their current supervisors, peers, parents and students. And if needed, we will visit the finalists' candidates' home school. Our timeline that I previously shared with you stated that the goal is to choose the next Tewksbury Memorial High School principal in mid to late March. The starting date for this new administrator is July 1st, 2022. We're currently on track to do just that.
Great. Any questions? I'm sure Mrs. Demos doesn't have any.
I have, I have no questions. Just thank you so much for your hard work, and thank you, Shannon, for representing us.
Yes, I was going to say the same. I'm excited to see who those four candidates are and looking forward to seeing who you guys ultimately decide who's going to be the new high school principal here, so thank you for your work on that. And that moves us. I'm going to yield the floor to Mr. Libby for the RFP for Consultant Services update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At the January meeting, the, the committee had asked that we conduct a search to get the services of a consultant to assist us in the superintendent search as, as the school committee is in charge of. We produced a request for quote during that week after that meeting, sent it out to some, six companies that are in that type of business, executive searches. We received four quotes back from various, out of the six companies we, we reached out to. Mass Association of School Committees was the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. So, I was going to seek the committee's approval to enter into a contract with them to provide those services to the committee and the search committee.
Great. And just for discussion, we'll start with Mrs. Demos?
Yes, thank you, Dave. I appreciated the plethora of information that we received in regards to this. It was helpful in understanding how this process actually works and appreciate the due diligence that went in into finding this, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. And, I would endorse having MASC as our search. Our company to help us search for the new superintendent.
Mrs. Garabedian?
I have no questions. I echo what Shannon has said, and I appreciate all your hard work. Happy to make a motion unless there's more discussion.
Great. No, I'm happy with MASC as well. We not only have partnered in the past, but we have ongoing partnerships with them, so it seems like it's going to be a very good fit, and I'll leave it to you, Mrs. Garabedian.
I'll make a motion to move forward with the RFP with MASC to help us with our superintendent search and enter into contract on behalf of the school committee.
A second?
Okay. Can I just clarifying here? I think Mr. Libby is requesting the school committee approve for him to engage the MASC in a contract on behalf of the committee to assist the school committee in conducting the superintendent search for Tewksbury Public Schools. Could we, could I clarify that in your motion?
That is my motion. I'm making that motion.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second, just to be sure, Shannon?
Yes.
For the school committee to approve Mr. Libby to engage MASC in a contract on behalf of the committee to assist the school committee in conducting the superintendent search for the Tewksbury Public Schools.
Second.
All right. All those in favor signify by, actually, you know what, this is money, I think we need a roll call vote. Mrs. Garabedian, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. That's a unanimous vote. Thank you very much. And Mr. Libby, as soon as you can coordinate with MASC, we look forward to hearing back from you. Obviously, I'm not sure how tight the timeframe is right now, but certainly we're eager to get going as soon as we can, so.
Yes, the specifications suggested we could start as early as tomorrow, so I'll reach out.
Wonderful, great.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Libby. All right. I already have the program studies that was moved up. We have the 2022, my goodness, 2023 school calendar draft.
Yes, we do, Mr. Chairman. Boy, the years roll by, don't they?
It does.
What you do have in the packet is a draft. I will be asking for you to vote and put your blessing on the draft of this calendar after I just explained some of the moves and changes that have been made. You should know that I reached out to our TTA leadership team, Connor Burgoyne, Emily Niles and Emily Noel, to brainstorm on this calendar together with me as the representative from the district because especially due to the fact that the December break timeframe is still planned as the physical move into our new Center Elementary School. So therefore, what we needed to really brainstorm is an appropriate calendar for the whole district, but with a focus on clustering as many of the professional development time around that week. So what you have in front of you, and I want you to focus on the December break, the 22nd and the 23rd, you'll see their purple days on the calendar. Those are two early release days for students, but full days for staff so they can have workshop time in the afternoon. Our hope and our plan, and certainly there are a lot of details that go along with this, is those two early release days will give the school, the principals, the teachers and the students, opportunity to have those activities, celebrations, assemblies, and time to say goodbye to their elementary school, which they'll be leaving at that time, and time to say goodbye to their peers. It'll also give the teachers time in the afternoon to make some of, we're going to use some of our time prior to that as well, but time in the afternoon to make their class fully prepared and labeled to be moved over to the new school, all of those items that will be going with them, and time to say goodbye to their peers and their colleagues. You can see that the December recess are those black days. Our plan and hope during that time, and we have the volunteerism of our townwide PAC, is to offer orientations and physical tours of the new school, just like a kindergarten orientation might happen the day before school. We're going to try to open up that school some of those days for students and families to come in and find out where their child will be attending class right after vacation. And then you can see the two green days on January 3rd and 4th. Those are full professional development days. Our plan for those two days would be to fully train our teachers in using their new room, fully train them in safety and security procedures, you know, fire drills, things like that, and just how to find their way around the building, the lunch schedule, all of those things that happen when you open a new school or even start a school for the first time ever. Our students' first day of school would be January 5th. So January 5th and 6th would be much like the first two days of school in the fall, where students participate in orienting to the building, their new classroom, those safety and security procedures, lunch bells, things like that. So it's an extended vacation for families, but there's intentional purpose built in here, saying goodbye and leaving the old school, moving in, orienting and moving in and training our staff in the new school. So, it, it did take, we, we discussed this at length. We feel that this calendar meets the needs of those staff members, and we had our principals look at it, we had our district leadership team look at it, and principals share this with their parent leaders within their own school. And, people feel this is a good calendar to help us around that transition time into our new school. So, there's a lot of moving pieces still. This is not the plan, it's simply the calendar, the first step in that transition process over to the Center Elementary School. I hope you feel we've done a good job and that we can move forward with this district calendar.
Okay. And obviously, we'll bring that back up for old business further down the road when we get closer to what we think wants, needs to be finalized.
If it pleases the Chair, if we could get a, your blessing on this, we can post it at least so that parents can start planning around that extended December recess.
Is that okay with you guys?
Yeah, and I appreciate that you consulted with the teachers. I think that would be my, would have been my first question anyway, so if, you know, if it works for the staff and it works for the transition, yeah, I'm, I'm good with it.
Okay. Mrs. Demos?
I do echo Bridget in the fact that I appreciate the true collaboration that seems to have gone into the creation of this calendar. My, my one question that comes to my brain, and I think it's my ESPC, right, is if we are not opening right on time?
Yes.
Will there be notice, notification, or will we have anything on this calendar as like a caveat, or will it just be as soon as we have that information, we push it out in regards, like this is our best plan as of right now, and then we reach back out to you once we have reason to believe that we need to push it further? I just wanted to kind of understand what our plan would be if that is the case.
You certainly always have that opportunity to change the school calendar as we need. This is, we're, typically, we vote on this in January?
Yeah.
But we knew we needed that extra time to think through the new school, but you're right. If something were to change in the schedule of building the new school or, or occupancy permit or completion?
Right.
Then yes, we would bring that to your attention immediately if we needed to change up this calendar.
Because this is wonderful, wonderful, it's creative, it gives the time for, you know, saying goodbye, like you said, and giving us time to actually physically move over to the new building?
Right.
And, I only hope that this actually pans out to be the actual calendar.
Right, right.
It has my blessing as it is. I'm just being, you know, from a different lens, thinking what, what if, and how do we give the information to families then?
I think it's important to note for anybody who might be watching, and I hope people are, because this is an exciting time for us. This is really truly an exciting, positive thing to be looking forward to. No teacher has to move their own items, as you know, as being part of the committee. There's a move manager. There's a lot of coordination that goes into the boxes, the labeling and all of that and getting ready. It's over that December break and maybe even some items prior on weekends. We're looking to get all of that stuff moved in by the break so that they have the opportunity as soon as we come back to pack. No teacher has to move their own items to the new school.
Right, right, which I think is huge. I've, I've never heard so many details about moving and packing and, that I heard through this, this committee that I'm sitting on. But yes, though, that's my only comment in regards to the calendar.
Okay. With that, what is the pleasure of the board?
So, do we make a motion to approve this as written at this time?
To approve the draft.
The draft.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion by Mrs. Garabedian to approve the 2022-2023 school calendar draft as presented this evening on February 9th. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the school calendar draft for the school year 2022-2023 as presented Wednesday, February 9th, 2022. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That draft school calendar, once again, is just the draft. We hope it will become the final product, but just the draft school calendar is approved. So families, be aware of that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Ms. And Ms. Johnson, I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you to you. Ms. Johnson spends an exorbitant amount of time moving dates and colors as we brainstorm this. So, yes, we leave the word draft on there until we have the final approval closer to the end of the school year.
Okay. And are you doing the center school relocation directory as well?
Yes, very briefly. This is what I had promised you at our last meeting, is a directory. Now, this is clearly a work in progress. There's a lot of TBDs to be determined. It's currently posted on our district webpage and will be updated and communicated to parents as each one of these departments makes a move. You can see where departments are slated to temporarily reside until the district central office is ready in the new school. And you know what? I'm going to turn the mic over, it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Libby to just give you a brief update on where we are with that transition.
Absolutely. Yeah, we are, we're working with the town on when we can take sort of ownership, possession of the old fire station to do some minor renovation work, get it properly wired for our needs as office space for the folks in the center school. That date's still a little bit up in the air as they're completing the new fire station project across the street. That project, when that project is in completion, and they're going to take some time to get moved in. So, we're a little unclear on when we'll be able to start our piece of the renovation of the old fire station. But we are looking at the possibility of making some moves as early as February vacation for folks that are moving within the school-owned properties already. So, it's very much a work in progress, very fluid situation. The folks at the center school and the schools that are offering up space have been super flexible and very cooperative about, you know, any ideas we are floating by them. They're problem solving with us and logistics and the tech guys and the phone folks and everybody's really trying to pull this together so that we can meet that April 1st deadline for the school building project of being out of the center school so they can begin that demolition process, which is pretty involved when you get down to what has to be done inside the building just to prep for the demolition. We heard from the contractor, all the steps that they need to take to get that done, have that whole area prepped as a parking lot and a bus loop and ready for the arrival of students at the end of August at the Ryan School. We're really pushing to try to make that April 1st deadline as best we can.
Okay. All right. Any questions?
Questions?
All right. Moving on to school committee matters of interest, and I'm going to start with Mrs. Garabedian.
I would first like to congratulate the theater department at the high school for a fantastic show. Went to see Forbidden Broadway this weekend and it was, it was really a great performance. Some really talented students and looking forward to Mamma Mia.
Great.
My first matter. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Garabedian. Mrs. Demos?
I just wanted to take a moment and celebrate Chris' last time with us here. I know that this was not how you planned to end your tenure here with us in Tewksbury, but I want to thank you for being a steadfast leader and somebody who was always willing to pick up the phone when you saw the name go through and answer as thoroughly as you could or get back to us as soon as you could. It was much appreciated. Your professionalism and your dedication to the students and the staff in Tewksbury were second to none. And I want to make sure that you hear from me or from us personally that you will be missed and you are appreciated. And best wishes on that retirement.
Thank you. Thank you. And I just wanted to echo, obviously, you and I spend a tremendous amount of time together, probably too much, Chris. I've always looked up to how you present yourself. You're always very fair and honest and professional. Things aren't personal for you. Issues are issues. These are really difficult jobs and very, very, very challenging times. And, you know, we see that around every turn, not just in life, but certainly magnitude by the pandemic. And, you know, I just can't tell you how grateful I am we've had you as a leader. I think I've said this at times before. There's a lot of people in charge, not a lot of people leading out there. And I have always appreciated myself, how you have presented yourself and how you have not only been in charge, but you've led in a positive manner. I think you're going to have a positive impact that's going to be felt on this district for years to come. Your dedication to improve achievement, outcomes for all learners, as well as your commitment to improving student and staff environment, environments will be here long after you're gone with the opening of the new Center Elementary School. So, with that being said, I know you are moving on. We certainly would love to have you when that building opens up. And on behalf of the school committee and a grateful community, I believe, I wish you the best of luck in your retirement and all your next chapters in your life, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And we also got something for you.
Yes, Chris.
Thank you. Appreciate you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to say very quickly, thank you to the three of you, the work. I see the work every day that you three do for students and I see the work you do for this district. And it's amazing under trying conditions. And unfortunately, you're never going to get the credit for it, but the people who know the work know what you do. The professionalism you display, even on nights like tonight, is in the best interest of our kids. So, thank you for doing that. Thank you to previous school committee members. I know here this evening was Chrissy Palomino, Brian Dick, Arthy Bennett, Jamie Cutlass, Dennis Francis and Amy Stronach from the select board. So, thank them for being there, thank them for their support. Town manager, Richard Martori, Chief Columbus, Chief Kearns, just great partners in town. Can't say enough about the ability to work with them. Primarily, my right-hand, now my left-hand person, Brenda Regan, you've done an outstanding job making a decision on how to move the district forward. She's essential to that. There is no one that works harder and there's no one that cares more. So, I'm so delighted and thankful to be her partner in this and it was a true partnership, which was great. That's not easy to find when you walk into a superintendency, so I appreciate that work. Dave Libby, again, a great partner, cares about the district, works hard. He and Rick Pelletier really, really contribute at the district level to support what's going on. Really thank the entire administrative team, from the building principals to the department heads. You have a great leadership team here that really should be cherished. And it's not always an easy place to work. So, when you have great people like that, it's fantastic. And being part of that district leadership team has really been a highlight of my time here in, here in Tewksbury. Ms. Gail Johnson down here sees more of me than anybody and Maria Cutlass in the office and just thank, thank you both for your support and your dedication. You know, I'd really like to thank the staff in the district, the custodians, the secretaries, food service workers, teachers, nurses, paraprofessionals, central office staff, just an outstanding group of people. I've enjoyed every mone of it. And I really have an appreciation for the parents and the students here in Tewksbury. There is something certainly of value here in this district and it is our kids. And I do think that is something that we can all come together on. So, I've appreciated my time. I can't thank enough the school committee support, particularly all three of you. Keith, as you said, we spent a lot of time together. I'll miss that and I'll miss these, some of these challenges. But, you know, it's a good feeling knowing the district's going to move forward in great hands, in the three of you and in Ms. Regan. So, I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Malone. And that gets us to school committee meeting. Future dates, March 9th and April 13th. And do I have any future agenda items?
I'm just wondering, Mr. Chair, if we ever heard back from the police department if Waffles will be joining us?
I believe Waffles is coming in March. I believe Ms. Johnson has...
I eagerly awaiting a visit from Waffles.
That's the plan.
I've been waiting. I had to ask.
And then obviously, just, I think we all know it, but just so the public knows it, obviously, we'll be having continuous updates now with regards to the superintendent search. I'm thrilled to hear Mr. Libby's going to reach out tomorrow, so that's certainly going to be on a future agenda item. So, with that, Madam Vice Chair?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn the February 9th, 2022 regular school committee meeting at 9:00 PM. Thank you and good night.